All right.
We sparred. Yeah.
Yeah.
I was too hard on my ass.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Picture.
Really hard, thank you.
But I've been perfect your whole time. He wasn't a setting part of that house.
That's a challenge for us, for sure.
In all sports and play.
To be outside of it, so.
Yeah.
All right, hey, good evening. I have a 6:01 on the 26th of August. We have a form present, so I call this a public meeting of the Upson County Board of Commissioners to order. All right, we'll start off with the invocation. Reverend Bush, would you be able to help us out with that? And then we'll do the pledge allegiance. Wherever you want to stand is fine.
Let us pray. We should say, "Tell God, O holy Father, we come tonight in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. We come to the Lord thanking you for another day's journey. Lord, we ask that you look upon this nation in which we live, Lord. We ask, oh Lord, that you will speak peace to those who walk through our country. Dear Lord, we ask that you speak healing to those that are sick and diseased. Lord, we ask that you look upon the ones that govern this nation, Lord, that you will guide and lead them in the way that you will have them to go. Now, Lord, God, we ask that you look upon this state, look upon this county, Lord, as we come to this county commissioners meeting tonight, Lord. We ask, oh God, that you have everything done decent and in order that will benefit the people in this community. Oh Lord, we pray right now in the name of Jesus that you will guide us, lead us, keep us in your safekeeping. Oh Lord, forgive us for our sins and our negligence, realizing, oh Lord, that we might have sinned by thought, word, or deed. And, Lord, we give you the praise, the honor, and the glory for all that you have done, all that you have gone to do. And it's in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Bush. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Yeah, just a reminder, if you have a cell phone or mobile device, you could silence and I appreciate that. Let me make sure mine's that way. Okay. This happened. All right, next thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Slow move.
I have a motion to approve the agenda from Commissioner Jones. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Watson. All in favor? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing for the 2025 millage rate. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Slow move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Biggs. All in favor? It's unanimous. Hearing is open. We have the sign up sheet for the public hearing. No one signed up to speak about the millage rate, so do I have a motion to close that public hearing?
Slow move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Biggs. All in favor? It's unanimous. Motion carries. So here we go, tax. Let me sort through my papers. Okay, so with that public hearing complete, we have completed the requirements for three public hearings, and we are now to the resolution for authorizing the 2025 tax levy. I'm not going to read the entire resolution. It'll be available with the minutes, but the millage rates are set as follows. Countywide general maintenance and operation millage at 9.46, unincorporated joint projects millage at .89, and unincorporated services millage at 2.26. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Slow move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Ellington.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. Resolution is signed. Okay, we have another public hearing on beer and wine package sales license. Applicant is Richard Phillips. Do we want to, do we have a presentation for that before we have a public hearing? No presentation?
Make motion to open the public hearing.
I have a motion to open a public hearing from Commissioner Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Biggs. There's no one signed up to speak for this action. Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Slow move. Second.
Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Watson.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there any discussion on this beer and wine package sales?
I'd like us to, um, this is, this was taken this morning, maybe?
This afternoon.
This afternoon. You know, we need to do that for our south side groceries, you know, then clean it up first, clean it up, then come back. It's for the work.
You want to make that into a motion?
Yes.
Do you want to put a timeframe on it before you make your motion?
Thirty days.
So make four meetings.
Okay, so I have a motion to table for 30 days beer and wine package sales license for Richard Phillips by Commissioner Biggs. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item on the agenda is another public hearing for.
Special exception.
Special exception for Clark Chapel Baptist Church. They want to have a multipurpose area across the road, across Mathis Lake Road. So we have a, someone signed up for that. Can I get a motion? Is there a presentation first before we do the?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I can start while she was trying to get it switched over to me so we're on the screen unless you'd like to wait.
No, I looked at it in packet.
Okay. The request is for a special exception for a multipurpose building on 2.8 acres, Zone AR. This is on Mathis Church Road. The building's intent is to support youth programs, church events, and homecomings. The address of the, actually of the sanctuary itself is 176 Mathis Lake Road. I would anticipate that we'll need a new address for this building, which is across the street, if it's approved. The church also owns an additional .28 acre parcel and five acre parcel in the area. AR surrounds the area onsite. This is their recreation field, basically. There's a washroom, backstop, there's a well there, et cetera. This obviously would take over the one recreation, an outdoor recreation use, and substitute it with an indoor recreational use. This is primarily a low-density, single-family neighborhood. There is some heavily wooded areas and some planted pond, and of course, the church is across the street itself. Now, the character area map in this vicinity is active agriculture, and your staff report, you've got several goals and strategies from the comp plan that may apply in this particular case. As you know, we have special exception criteria by which the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission, when it applies, are to use. One of those is contrary to the purpose of the ordinance. Again, this is a special exception that's considered actually in the name of the church rather than an accessory structure. Normally, this structure wouldn't be allowed there because it's on a separate lot from the church. Now, if this was on the same parcel as the church, we wouldn't even be here. It would just be automatically part of the church complex, and we wouldn't be here for that either. But we have the very unique situation where it's on an independent lot, and the code does require a special exception for a church by itself. So it was my decision, and makes perfect sense that there should be a special exception for this accessory structure to the church, which actually isn't on the church proper property. So that's why we're here. This is an auxiliary building across the street, and you see that in the aerial photograph. These type of uses may not constitute a nuisance or a hazard. Again, as I say, most of these type cases, it's how it's maintained and how it's managed. Anything can be a nuisance if it's improperly managed and maintained, especially something that's a recreational facility for kids. Obviously, the church has been there a very long time, so the neighborhood is very used to the church being there, and apparently the ball fields being used for various activities. So this just switches the type of activities of recreation and other uses to an indoor facility. The effects, well, on the neighborhood, obviously, there'll be more parking in this particular area if there are more events. There will be paved parking lot now. There also is a call for a gravel lot, so there, and I don't know if this will increase activity at the church. I anticipate that's the purpose of building the building, and so they increase that. Obviously, that's going to have an effect on the immediate neighbors, and the residential neighbors aren't far away. They're pretty close. The other requirements that might be necessary would be the fire safety codes, building permit applications, and anything dealing with the sanitary sewer and the water supply. The Planning Commission did hear this case at its July 14th meeting. They voted 3,01 with one abstention to recommend approval to you with conditions, and I'll go over some of the conditions now. To summarize, they deal with site plan approval, maximum occupancy, parking requirements, ingress and egress, noise and hours of operation, compliance with applicable codes, prohibiting commercial use other than church functions, and there is a timeline, which I think in special exceptions, we've had this issue in the past where special exceptions get approved and nothing happens for years. So I think that we need to start having a timeline requirement, and so you've got one of those conditions that was recommended by the Planning Commission. Let's, I'm going to go back up to detailed site plan. One of the things they recommend to you is that, at the time they had their initial hearing, there was no site plan for them to really review. Since that time, there is a site plan. It's in your packet as part of the report, so you have the option to see that. The Planning Commission, in their recommendation, said they wanted to have approval of that site plan. Was not able to do that at their last meeting due to a short-term issue with quorum. So they really can't, weren't able to approve it yet, but they could at their next meeting. Now, again, with their recommendation that that site plan needs to come back to them anyway, if you approve these conditions as proposed, then that is in there, and again, that might delay processing of the building permit, but you'll see the language basically says no building permits will be approved until that site plan is approved. So that is the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Most of these other conditions are generic. They're really not specific. They basically say, "Do what you're already required to do." Now, the timeline that I put in here is six months after Board of Commission approval that the building must be completed and have a CO within 36 months of the special exception for that approval. So they've got to have their building permit first of six months, and then 36 months for completion of the construction. And again, if those numbers are an issue with the church or with y'all, like I said, this is our first foray maybe into starting to set a deadline for these special exceptions, so we don't have years and years of nothing happening on them.
Doug, can I ask Doug a question?
Sure.
All right, Doug, so not just this building here, but any future buildings that we put a timeline on. So what if setting a three-year mark and at two years it quits? What happens?
Well, quits would be what, sale of the property or they're no longer?
They couldn't, they couldn't fund the rest of it. Quits.
Right.
So what would happen then?
Well, in terms of this process, there wouldn't really be anything because there's nothing in the process. In terms of code enforcement, if we even have a provision about incomplete buildings that are sort of built, I'm not sure we have a provision that would take care of that either. We'd have to look into something like that.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, you know, to have a timeline because we've approved a lot of stuff that still haven't ever got started, right, James?
Yeah, well, we started putting some timelines on things. If you'll think back over the last few, we would have done that. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Jordan, if I may, as a public, he represents the church.
Yeah, he's on the list to represent him as a spokesperson when we open the hearing.
Okay. I want to answer a question.
All right, and I apologize to the audience. We don't have all this for them to see, but I'm going to the graphics in your report. You see the aerial photograph where the property is. You'll see that it's southeast of the current sanctuary itself. They also do own, there's five acres due west of the property that the church owns, and then there's that small vacant parcel just to the north of the sanctuary. Not the one that looks like a road right away, but the one just above that, and they own that property also. The next slide in your staff report is the overall layout, the color layout.
Working on the horse head.
There we go. Now we got, thank you, Jessica. Good job. All right, well, the pictures are a lot more educational anyway. So this is the site plan. It was not available when the Planning Commission first heard it. It's since become available. So again, if you approve that first condition, the only thing that my department would do would not issue the building permit until the Planning Commission does have the opportunity to look over this plan and review it. Obviously, there's two driveways. We would need a permit, an application to the road department for those, and the approval of the road, and then any other sanitary sewer requirements. I believe there's already a well on site, but we would have to have proof that that was inspected. This is the elevation drawings of what the building would look like. Then we'll just go through the photographs of the area and the property. This is the sanctuary itself, which is not under consideration tonight, but this is what's across the street from the building that we're talking about. All right, so this is the large field area. Again, it's a recreation field now, so it's a bunch of grass with trees around the perimeter. There is an old scoreboard on the property, I guess with a storage shed. I presume that's maybe bathrooms or something similar to that, the volleyball net, the And these are the homes in the area, mostly across the street. There's some wooded areas there. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions for Doug before we open the hearing? Okay, can I get a motion to open a public hearing?
Slow move.
Commissioner Watson, I have a second?
Second.
I have a second.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and the public hearing is open, and we had Mr. Joe Jordan was going to speak for the application. Just state your name and.
I'd sign up in case y'all had questions.
Okay.
Because I wasn't allowed, because I didn't sign up.
I did have questions. I'm supposed to, you've heard and seen the recommendations of the Planning Commission, and you've heard the timeline that he proposes. Any of this going to cause?
Timeline might be a problem because we're dealing with a company that will come in and set the building once it's left there, and you know how it works. Construction, we may be able to get them there in a week. It may take a month to get them there to actually do the work. So I don't know that three to six months.
Six months?
It's 36 months.
36 months.
Three years.
Three years.
Six months is to get your permit.
Right.
Yeah, 36.
Three years. You covered all that, man, right? Yeah. Okay, three years to construct it.
Yeah. Should be plugged.
Any other questions, Phil?
Well, thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept.
Okay, I think we have to close the hearing. Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs, I got a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have discussion, and is there any further discussion? You want to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, I have a motion to accept, approve the application, approve the special exception with the conditions stated.
Yes.
And it's seconded by Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is another special exception. Stephen Evans-Johnston Smith of Barnesville, Georgia has requested that Upson County permit a temporary camper construction at 865 Vickery Road. I have Mr. Stephen Smith here to speak on his behalf. Is there any presentation? It's just a standard, is it?
Well, it is a standard, so I can give you the standard presentation.
So this is for construction, they're going to?
Right, they've, you'll see, I'll go over the photos here. Mr. Stephen Evans-Johnston Smith of Barnesville has requested that he be able to live in an RV temporarily during construction of his home. Of course, at this stage, they already have to have the permit that's required. They already have to have the well in, the septic tank. In this particular case, they were pre-existing, so nothing new had to be put in. They just had to be investigated and approved by the Health Department. This is 2.2 acres on Vickery Road, about a third of a mile just north of Gasset Road. There was, you'll see in the aerial, which is a little confusing. It confused me. I had to go out and say, "Is there a house there?" Apparently, between 2022 and now, the house that you see in the aerial photograph was demolished. I, we looked into our records. We didn't have any record that it was legally with a permit demolished, but apparently was demolished at some point. So that aerial that's in your staff report that shows the home, that home is no longer AR zoning in the area, this is in sparsely residential area. We've got some critters across the street. Again, we have the criteria for special exception, whether it's contrary to the purpose of the ordinance, obviously, this is a special exception that is in the ordinances to be considered by special exception, so it's not contrary, at least in those instances where the Board of Commissioners approves them, whether this is detrimental or will constitute a nuisance or hazard. Again, these temporary RVs, to be honest, we've never had a complaint about any of them after they've been approved by the Board of Commissioners. Sometimes we get complaints before they're approved, but never after. Again, the impact will be minor. There's a lot of woods around the perimeter of this particular home, so it's possible, depending on where it's placed, that you won't see it very easily, especially once construction begins. Again, there's information in the staff report about the water supply and the sanitary sewer. Again, it was all pre-existing and has been inspected by environmental health. Staff, in this case, as you know, the process does not go through the Planning Commission. These applications go directly to the Board of Commissioners, so you've got staff recommendations in this case. We do recommend approval. The travel trailer home is very temporary, an accessory only, and the county does traditionally approve these within the normal limits. I won't go through all those conditions. These conditions are taken from the zoning ordinance, so you approving them for this particular one just reinforces the conditions, and the requirements are already in the ordinances. This is the aerial photograph. You'll see the blue box off to the left. That's where the site is. And again, you see a roof there, but that's no longer there. They have started site prep, so the pad has been started, but that home no longer exists. This is the plan that was submitted with the application. This is the pad, with only, within the last week or two, I think, has this been cleared and started. And this is looking from towards the back of the lot forward to Vickery Road. This is across the street, across the street neighbor, single-family area. That concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions for Doug?
Yeah, have the bottom building permit yet?
That's required before they even, they have the building permit, they have well and septic are approved, have the driveway permit from the road department. That has to be done, and the difference between that and a regular building permit is the well and septic actually have to be inspected and operating as opposed to just have a permit, so, yes, they're far along.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the acceptance of this mobile home.
Have a hearing first.
Okay. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I have a motion to open the public hearing. Commissioner Jones, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Watson?
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and there is only one person signed up to speak, and that is a submitted applicant, Mr. Smith. Is there anything else you want to add, Mr. Smith?
Nothing, nothing unless y'all have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, get a motion to close the hearing?
Slow move.
A motion from Commissioner Jones to close the hearing, and second. Got a second from Commissioner Ellington?
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I make a motion to go ahead and approve this RV for construction of the house.
I have a motion for approval from Commissioner Jones. I have a second.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, that does include approval of the plan that you saw in the presentation and the conditions?
Yes.
Yes, as we're proposing.
I thought we needed to have timeframe, not to say 12 months.
I think it's in the, in the ordinance, it's 24 months.
Well, the way it works is you set the first period, and then I can grant a 12-month extension. So you normally say 12 months, but it doesn't have to be 12.
Okay, so I have amendment to a motion from Commissioner Ellington to set a timeframe of 12 months.
Oh, it was in, it wasn't in there? It was, okay.
So it'd be?
Unless he wants to change his.
Yeah, I accept.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with a 12-month limitation from Commissioner Jones. We have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and we have one person signed up, Andrew Carroll. Andrew Carroll, just state your name and if you're a resident of Upson County.
Andrew Carroll, resident of Upson County, live at 10 Bang Street. That's Mr. Biggs's territory, so. But the reason why I'm coming to you guys today is I want to address some comments that were made to you guys in the past week from a resident during what I would assume was a public hearing. Gentlemen, I don't believe it's here tonight, but the comments that he made were that you should stop spending money on your recreation department and Spur Bluff. To that, I say that is a crock of you-know-what. Those two particular facilities are a lifeblood of our community, Spur Bluff in particular. I couldn't tell you how many times I go down there. I couldn't tell you how many times I go down there for my job, and that place, especially the lower part, is packed. Resident said that he felt that there was, it didn't give the county a lot of benefit. To that, I say you've never been there, because if you had, you would know this. You would know just all of these events they have down there, all the work they do down there. Spur of Love is one of the most beautiful places in this community, and if we were to not support it, that would be a travesty. The second thing he said was that y'all should stop funding or stop putting as much money into your recreation department. To me, again, that's a travesty. What, to that person, I would ask, what do you want these kids to do if you don't give them sports? Do you want them to just work on their cellphones all the time? Do you want them to just be on the cellphones all the time? We are, this same person, I would assume would be one of those same people who would complain about that. I would get that feeling just from talking to him and from his general comments. But if you don't have recreation, what do you want them to do? This same gentleman came to another board in the county and said the same thing. To me, that's just shortsightedness, because if you're not spending money on your sports programs, then your kids are going to grow up, they're not going to know how to be on a team, they're not going to know what camaraderie is, they're not going to know how to win a game, and they're most certainly not going to know how to lose a game.
One minute.
To me, y'all are doing a great job with your sports program, the recreation department is humming along, I'm sure there's still a few things that could be corrected here and there, but it's humming along, it's doing great, they're having record turnout, keep supporting it, I understand sometimes they get some slack for it, but keep supporting it, because those kids deserve it, the parents of those kids deserve it, they're not going to learn that type of team sport anywhere else, so keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And you can come back and talk to us anytime you want.
I ain't talking about Miller's right now.
Well, you know, that's tied to the record.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, right? And there's a couple of things on there that we may need to pull off to talk about. Where is, uh?
Alan.
What, uh?
Scrubbing.
What, which item do we need to pull off to have a discussion on, Alan?
Contract in respect to the lift station.
Okay.
It's still in progress, I'm working with the contractor on making some adjustments to the contract itself, and once that's complete, have our county attorney take a look at it, and so I wish, Mr. Chairman, if the board would give you approval, to be able to sign that contract once it's done.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to pull item K off the consent agenda and move it to new business.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Any comment about the consent agenda you say you might?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda with adding some wordage that the 2025 road paving project list, that we can adjust it over the year if another road comes up and a full board votes on doing another street that's tied to a street we're fixing.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Jones to approve the consent agenda with the caveat that the 2025 road paving project is subject to full board approval of changes. I have a second. I have a second from Commissioner Biggs. Any other discussion, any other motions on agenda? Okay, I think we're ready to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Okay. And we had a lot of, a lot of changes there, normally I would read over item by item. The first, the first seven items on the consent agenda are minutes from previous meetings that were public meetings that are available to everyone on YouTube. And then during our work session, Richard Hickman, the EMA Director, came forward to talk to us about emergency master of case system upgrade that we approved. Just talked about the road paving project, and the last thing on there is a contract with Flint Contracting where we're renovating the Drake Building, which is ongoing, so just to be clear to everybody out there on YouTube who can't see the list on the, on the board. Next item up will be new business, and that will be item K, approval of contract for FS Carroll for the lift station replacement. So I'll open it up for discussion. County manager, now you can?
I may have discussed too much earlier, my apologies, Mr. Chairman. It's just a matter of, just some adjustments between us, and we're using the standard AIA contract, which can be, depending on the form you choose, can be quite lengthy, so we're just going through that and making sure that we agree on both sides of that. And there's really no issues, it's just timing when they got their drive back to me, and given that we won't have another board session until the end of September, I'd like to be able to have a chance once they complete that and our county attorney reviews it, that we can be able to get that contract signed as soon as we could, and so that can begin their work.
Okay.
Question. All right. So money didn't change, right?
No, sir.
The only thing we worry is about the wording of the contract?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion to go ahead and approve the lift station so they can keep moving forward without needing one?
Well, sir, you all actually have approved it, we've kind of had this process where we come back, have you just kind of approved the contract?
Well, I understand that, but that was on the consent agenda, and now it's back open in the real world.
I mean.
Sure.
I mean.
So you want a motion to approve the contract?
Motion to approve a contract at your decisions without putting it off another month as long as the money doesn't change.
Yes, given the chairman authorization.
Given the chairman authorization, it's keep right up that base of terms of the contract.
All right.
That'll work.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Jones to authorize me to execute contract on the lift station under the conditions we had previously stated in the work session.
Because that, that lift station's bad.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item up is discussion, consideration of the 2025 Voting Delegate for Legislative Leadership Conference. So this is the ACCG Conference at Jekyll Island, the 8th through 10th of October. I have not signed up yet for a course, I'm not sure if I will be there. Commissioner Biggs, did you sign up for it? Okay, I think I'm going.
Okay, I'll make a motion. In the case that he is unable to attend, I'll?
He can still be down there, even if he doesn't take classes.
Yeah, the conference is on Thursday.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I just need to make sure I can submit, I have to submit the name, so I need to make sure that I have.
Can you submit an alternate case for emergency?
I can try.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Chairman Brew to be the voting delegate, in case that he cannot, for whatever reason, then I will be the backup for that.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Ellington nominating myself as a voting delegate and himself as the alternate. I have a second for that.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Watson.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, and you could have just took it all on yourself.
Motion carried.
He jumped out there with the motion real quick, though. Okay. Next item, discussion and consideration of an exemption from the moratorium on any and all subdivision, whoa.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, wait.
Of real property in Upton County established in resolution 14 dot 25 for parcel 079021 located at 5500 Barnesville Highway.
Yes, sir.
Doug, do you have anything on this stuff?
No.
Okay. And your name, ma'am?
My name is Shannon Porter.
Okay.
And I wrote some things down just so that I would not lose track of what I was trying to get across, so I'm going to read it to y'all. But I'm here to respectfully request reconsideration because the moratorium is a personal hardship for our family. When my husband and I purchased our farm at 5500 Barnesville Highway here in Upton County, our plan was to rent a beef cattle farm and keep this farm and our family to pass on to our daughter in generations to come. My husband, myself, my daughter, and my elderly father reside at the farm at our residence. We run about 80 head of cattle. My husband and I have both always worked a full-time job in addition to the farm. It takes a lot to run it. This past winter, my husband began to experience significant pain and weakness in his hand and arm, we originally thought due to the repetitive motion of welding. After several tests and doctor's appointments, they told us he had to have immediate surgery in hopes that he could avoid partial paralysis that can be irreversible. He had to stop working, which meant a loss of income for our family and our farm. We had no choice but to sign up for Cobra Insurance, and you all know it was very expensive. He had surgery on June the 11th and remained in ICU for several days and was released to come home a week or so later. The recovery has been much more extensive than we were aware, and he will not be able to work for quite some time. This has left me being the sole provider of our family and our farm, and has brought a tremendous amount of stress and worry. With winter coming, I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to take care of everything, keep the bills paid and the cattle fed. After careful consideration, my husband and I decided that the only thing we needed to do was to sell a portion of our farm that we currently do not use. It is a 71-acre tract, we would like to sell around 50 to 60 of those acres. We prefer to scale it back to a smaller size, more like fence-to-fence where it already is, where it was currently. If we did sell it as a 71-acre tract, which we are allowed to do, it would compromise our barn, our goat pen, our, like, working fields, and I would have to re-fence, which would become another hardship on our family. I'm not able to afford to do that. All I'm asking is a modest adjustment that can make a significant, significant difference for my family.
Okay, so it's a 71-acre tract right now?
Yes, sir.
And you want to subdivide off 60-plus acres as one lot?
Yes, sir, as one lot. It originally was a 56-acre tract. When we purchased the farm, there was like 13 tracts. A couple of years ago, I re-upped my conservation, and we had no intention of ever selling this because of the situation we needed to. And so they had combined all of the tracts, and I had three separate tracts. So as it is now, that piece of property that I use comes into another field for me. And so I just kind of wanted to scale it back, but still as one, one lot to one person. It doesn't have enough road frontage to ever be subdivided further than that.
Okay, so a 60-plus acre tract, and you would still have a 10-plus acre.
Yes, I currently have 256 acres, so it would just be that one field that we do not use. I did not get a survey because it is a financial, you know, hardship on me already. If y'all were to not pass it, then I would have been out another, you know, $5,000 that I don't have currently. But that's all that it would be.
Chairman, that, I measured that up, that would, that would give that tract only 173 feet of road frontage. I know she's wanting to save the barn and everything else on the other side, which would have given it a whole lot more road frontage. And currently, right now, you're working on flag lots, and that has turned that piece of property into a flag lot with 173 feet of road frontage. I don't know, no other way you can make more road frontage.
From what I looked at, when we originally talked about it, I had calculated, and I don't have it with me, but it was within two acres of being the amount of road frontage you need to sell the piece of property. I did not know that this moratorium had gone in until I contacted the surveyor, because I came, I want to say like two days before y'all met last time, and they said I had plenty of road frontage to sell that, but it could not be a flag lot or anything like that. My hopes is that one person that has a farm also would want that piece of property next to me. I don't want it to be subdivided either. I don't want to do this, this is not something that I desire to do, but I'm kind of in a predicament where I feel like I don't have a choice. If I were to sell it as it is, I would have to replace my barns, my catch pen, and half of the field that I already work, then I would have to pay for re-fencing, and I'm trying to pull myself out and be able to pay for everything instead of add more to myself. And that's the only reason I wanted to scale it back. Originally, it was a 56-acre tract, and when I agreed to changing, you know, the three, the tracts into just three, I never thought that I was going to sell it, so I didn't foresee it becoming a problem at all.
So just so I'm clear, the, on the graphic up there, you're wanting to keep what's above the red line, and then?
Yes, sir.
So I, I see what you're saying, Commissioner Jones, when you, it's not a matter of when you subdivide it, again, after the fact, you're already less than 200 feet of road frontage when you make that, that, this subdivision.
Right. And then it'd make it a flag lot. That, that tract wasn't bought as one piece?
No, it was 13 tracts.
It was one sale. Excuse me, I'm Melissa Stevens, I'm her realtor, I sold her the property, and I would be the one helping her do this, and I'm trying to give her advice to get rid of this financial hardship. So it was a very lengthy contract with 13 parcels when we purchased the property, it was a very difficult contract. I don't know why it was divided into 13 different parcels, but it was.
Family.
Correct, and generations, right. So, so she did combine it, we don't know without a survey, we're assuming that par, I'm coming up with about 190 feet of road frontage there, which is sub 200, we understand. But that's what we're coming up with, using aerial mapping studies and things like that, but we won't know it until we get a final survey. And we did talk about selling it all, but it would be a huge financial hardship for her to sell that upper portion that is part of her working farm. I'm happy to answer anything else if you need to.
So the process that you're talking about, there is still going to be a variance, right? I said, you can have a flag lot, I don't know, or there is still going to be a variance. Making still?
Yeah, we discussed that.
I'm asking, like, what the exceptions are. I don't mean to be whispering, I shouldn't say that out loud, so I'm trying to figure out what's in the realm of possible.
And this, this has zero bearings on this, but I, you know, probably not the question to ask, but have you talked to your neighbors, are they interested in your property, is that a potential for you there? Because then they could combine that with theirs, and it would, would be such an issue.
I did reach out to the guy behind us, he had raised, Donald Bohannon owned a lot of property behind us, and he had originally, when we bought the property to start with, we bought the backside of the property, and we were next to Donald, and we were going to build on the property. My mom got sick, I had to help my dad take care of her, and we couldn't, we couldn't afford, I didn't want to move her into it, I mean, it's a long drama, but I didn't want to move her into a rental home, so we ended up going back and asking to buy the house that sat on the front side of the property. When we did that, we sold it back to Donald. Donald recently passed away, and the man that bought that farm, we went to him, he had just recently bought Donald's farm, and he just couldn't do anymore. And so I haven't, I don't have anybody else, I mean, the next person that would be, would be if I went and asked Steve Harvey, and he just wouldn't, you know what I mean, anymore to add to what he already has. In a perfect world, that would have been awesome, though.
So, I guess the question, another question I have, so, and this is probably illegal and Doug, you're, so if we made an exception to this lot, it would have been like an exception to this lot, say, this lot cannot be subdivided, because there's not, there's not enough frontage for it. It would have to be sold as one parcel. It would have to be sold as one parcel, and it would always stay as one parcel.
Can you put it in a deed, though?
Can we, can we do that legally to protect our orders we have coming up?
Have you seen that, Doug?
I've seen.
I've seen in deeds that you can, you can limit it.
I mean, with special exception, and we can put restrictions on special exceptions, we can tell somebody what they can build on a piece of property. Surely, we can tell you that a piece of property can't be subdivided.
To answer your question, I've seen it in deeds, that it's limited, but I can't tell you that it hold up a deal, because I've never seen it.
What if that's the entranceway for, that's the road to the subdivision? It's not a flag lot, but it's subdivision?
I still think that's, that is a flag lot. It's flag lots off a flag lot. I mean, that's... I guess what I'm saying is if we said, hey, we can allow this, but this property will not be subdivided, because what we don't want to do is a developer to come in and purchase it, and then go in there and subdivide it and put lots in there. So, what are you, that's your?
Well, that's the purpose of, you know, the flag lot thing, is somebody coming in and taking that whole entrance, and then coming in there, shooting houses off it.
So has the property officially been surveyed for road frontage?
When I purchased it, it was surveyed, and I actually paid for the survey. But it's all changed now, because it became a seventy-one acre tract when I changed conservation. And so I don't know that currently.
You could will it from pan to pan, because this has been done in the last eight years, so you can go from pan to pan from, because there's actually a house in the middle of that, so you can go from pan to pan, I'm sure.
And that's a lot of the reason why it needs to not be the whole seventy-one, because that house that the Nash has had, that was like her mom's house that we bought the farm from, that's like a, I want to say a two-acre lot. She really probably only lives on like an acre, and the rest of it around her has just grown up. It cuts into that section, so the way it would come up would be backed up behind her house. And that's why I can't give more road frontage, because it would be like a horseshoe regardless. So it needs to stop where my fence stops before her house starts, if that makes sense.
Chairman, I think if you're, I mean, if you're inclined to move, to find a hardship here, which obviously there's hardship, but sufficient enough to grant this, I think what Commissioner Ellington has said, to include that language in the deed when it is sold, it cannot be subdivided moving forward, would be the appropriate way to address the issue of the board. And I understand the concern of Commissioner Jones as well with the flag lots. However, this, you know, if it's, if it is a hundred-and-ninety, and we're not sure at this point, it may be one-hundred-and-ninety, but a hundred-and-seventy plus versus two-hundred, I mean, you're not talking about a super narrow flag lot in this situation.
And if I may, I don't know if it makes any difference whatsoever to you all in today's world. I don't know if by combining these tax parcels, if she's messed herself up with zoning, but that existing parcel, the back parcel, they were just the existing road frontage when we sold it to her. The only thing that changed was she wanted the tax savings. So she went down into the Tax Excess office and combined those parcels.
And you're correct, but right now, we got a moratorium to change that. We're going to, we're wanting to require more road frontage to prevent flag lots.
I understand completely, and I know that's the purpose. I'm just saying that had she not combined them, regardless of what zoning changes you make, she would have been able to sell it with that existing road frontage, because it was an existing parcel. She only combined it for tax savings benefit, but it has on the tax parcel map now combined the parcels. But they were always existing parcels with just that amount of road frontage, that she wouldn't have had to change had she not combined it for tax purposes only. She didn't resurvey it into one big survey.
I'm going to jump out there, boys.
We know it's difficult.
All right, guys. If the lawyer says it can be written into a deed, that this tract of land cannot be further subdivided, I will make a motion to allow the process, even though in my best interest, it makes a flag lot.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Jones to
Do all kinds of stuff.
To approve the special exception with the condition that it cannot be further subdivided.
And the language be included in the deed, deed of sale.
Right, well, I have a second. I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Beeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Ruth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Motion carried.
I hope you find the box.
Me too. Thank you all so much for all you do for our community.
All right.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of an exemption from the moratorium on any and all subdivisions of real property in Upson County established in Resolution fourteen dot twenty-twenty-five, parcel zero-five-five-zero-six-nine, located on North Delray Road. Who is that?
Al Castile.
Al Castile.
Seven-eighty-one North Delray Road. And what I was, what I'm requesting to do is there's nine acres.
Can you step up so that I can hear you?
There's nine acres and two houses on the property. We've had the property since nineteen-sixty. My parents owned the property. Could you show that over? And I currently, yeah, well, you can't remember this every day, but I currently, yeah, the four-point-one-nine acres, that's a house, that's the one I want to sell, and then the six-point-two acres. Now, those are not actual numbers, that's just pulled off the computer, off the Tax Excess thing, so it's not going to be exactly right. It's probably going to be a little bit less than that, because it only shows nine acres on the deed. But what I want to do is to sell that house, it's a field up there above the house, which is about roughly three-hundred feet of road frontage. The house sits about four-hundred feet off the road, and like I said, it's pretty close to four acres with that house. And then that way, I can keep where I live now in the lower field, that has my shop, my, it's got a deer cooler, I just remember deer cooler, and like I said, where I live. There's no way that I can make it five, if, with a new moratorium, I mean, there's nine acres. I can't make it ten acres, so my only other option is to sell it all as one. Well, when you, you know, that limits my ability to sell it, because now I'm selling two houses and nine acres versus one house.
All right, I got a question, serious question. You only got nine acres, and all this adds up to ten, eleven, almost twelve acres.
Well, that's what I'm saying. When you do the, when you do the outlines on the tax thing, that's what it shows, but the deed says nine acres, and then that one-point-four-seven-four parcel, that's separate. So there's only nine acres in that parcel according to the deed. Like I said, I've done this on the computer just to kind of show a reference on what I wanted to do, but that's not the actual numbers that would be once it was surveyed. Because it'd probably be closer to five acres or four acres, which would be nine acres.
So that, that house is a whole totally separate tract?
It's not now.
Yeah, well, then you're, you're way on up into twelve acres. You only got nine.
No, no, there's only nine acres on that tract.
Right, total.
And total.
Right.
So I want to do, and the bottom half, the half that says six-point-oh-three acres, that's not six acres. I mean, like I said, this is just drawing it out on the computer off the Tax Excess website. I mean, it says it's more than it's actually there. So it's probably around five acres. And then the other acre section up there is four-point-one, nine-four acres, it's probably around four acres or maybe a little bit less.
So that's nine.
That's nine.
Then you got another acre and a half.
That's on a totally different, that's a different.
It's on the same tract on the tax map, though, right?
No, no, it's separate.
Two separate?
It's two separate. Yeah, seven-seven-nine, seven-eighty-one.
All right, so the one-point-four-seven-four, take it out of there.
Yeah, it's not.
The nine acres is these two, these two bigger lots right here.
Disregard the?
Yeah, disregard the.
Yeah, and the reason I'm showing it, because I've got to show exactly where I want to split it up, I'm going to follow the lines on the north side of it, come down about halfway, and then go straight down to the creek, which is roughly, you know, right at four acres. Probably, I mean, I hadn't got it, I couldn't get it, so I was a week away from getting the survey with the moratorium. I'd been waiting on Clay Moore near him for six weeks, and then a week before, that's when all this started, so. But we used to, it's a, I mean, it was my parents, that's my parents' house, I live in the other house, and then my son lives in one. So the, my son's moving, my parents have passed away, I bought my brother out, and then so that's what I'm doing, is trying to, I'm trying to keep the part that I'm living in, but sell the, their old house. Because I don't mean, I don't need the house, and I don't want to rent it.
Yeah, I was under the impression there was one tract, but it is, I just looked it up on the tax map. It is two separate.
Yes, seven-seven-nine and seven-eighty-one.
All right, so the road frontage is made.
Yeah, the acreage ain't going to work out, but, you know. But, so if there's nine acres, it can be, can you make it four and a half, four and a half?
I mean, it may be that, I don't know, I want to kind of follow what the line is now, because that would give me enough room between where I live and the line to get in there. I don't want to make it too close. But yeah, I mean, it would be, it may be four and a half acres by the time we get it surveyed. And I can get close to that, yeah, but I don't want to, I don't want to hold myself to exactly four and a half acres, because I want...
But, yeah, but I don't want it to come back if it's three.
No, it's not going to be three. It'll be at least, you know, I'll tell you, it'd be at least four. I mean, I can do four.
That's what I was going to say, I mean, you could almost put a caveat that if it's, you know, over three acres or more than whatever, you know, the split is.
He's got the road frontage, I guess.
Yes, it's three-hundred.
Move the map up a little bit, please. There you go. Okay, all right, so that two-ninety-six is, yeah, okay, so it doesn't come up into the
That's probably five hundred.
County right of way.
That's probably five hundred on the lower side, what I would be keeping road frontage. Selling would be about three hundred, what I would be keeping would be about five hundred foot of road frontage.
This is towards a new hardship?
Oh, yeah, because I mean, right now, I'm, you know, like I said, I bought my brother out, and then, so that was the whole, he lives in Woodstock, I mean, he's not here, so he wasn't going to be here, so instead of holding, holding him up, I went and bought him out. So right now, I'm paying the interest on all this, on everything that I've purchased, at about two grand a month, because, I mean, well, I'm at seven percent interest, and I didn't do a traditional, because, I mean, it was a short-term thing. This was supposed to have been done, this is going to be just a short-term deal. And so that's the reason I just got a regular business loan. So, yeah, it's a hardship, this is, like I said, I don't want to be a renter, I don't want to be a landlord.
My only problem right now, the only problem I got, is you're going to, you're going to keep that piece you're living on, you're going to sell one tract?
Well, now, the other half, the seven-seven-nine, now that's possibly, I may sell it later on, but that's, you know, like I said, it's already, it's already separated, on its own partial.
Right.
So the house and one and a half acres, that's what it was, that's what it is.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're going to sell the other piece that's not involved, and then just that upper piece?
Yeah.
And you just keep your?
That's right, I'm going to keep the lower, the lower section where I live now, at that lower field, and like I said, my shop is on there, and my deer cooler, and the barns.
All right, I'm going to throw something at you all again.
We're waiting on you.
All right, so, since it hasn't been surveyed, I would like to make sure the acreage works out before I approve that it can be divided, because like you said, there's nine acres there. And if you end up, when you get surveyed, that you want six, then I want to leave three with that other.
And like I said, I mean, I'll rig it to the four acres, that's fine. I mean, I'll keep the five and do the four, I mean, that's, I don't have a problem with
This is just making it where he can plot. So we're going to still have the ability to, or does that go just to the plan in solving?
This is, staff is out of this by the resolution that you passed, so I really don't study these. Is this a simple split of one parcel into two?
Right.
It would come to us anyway. Current regulations, not until it's a split into three or more, do we look at.
Who has to see it after the split?
Nobody.
Mr. Jones, you can make a stipulation to your motion, and you won't make it before a condition that the survey, it has to be a survey, and the lots have to be a minimum of four acres. That helps.
Yeah, yeah, if you get, I'll make a motion to approve it, as long as that upper piece, or lower piece, whichever it is down the potato creek there.
One of them's at least five, have one's four.
Right.
They're both over four.
Right.
Yeah, both, both.
Both, both four or both five.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion for Mr. Jones to approve the special exception to...
And, and it needs to be, how are we going to? He can present that to Doug.
The survey. Approve the special exception with the caveat that land is surveyed and both parcels are greater than four acres.
Right.
And prove that. I have a second from Commissioner Watson.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Ruth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So, so, I mean, I can just go ahead and do the survey, and I'm just going to bring that.
Well, we'll need to see the survey completed, that meets the requirements, and the deed also, right? We want to make sure the deed says the same thing the survey said.
And that's, that's complete, when it's separated, it's created, they false all, that kind of comes along.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it.
All right, next item, discussion and iteration of an exemption to the moratorium on issuance of new alcohol licenses for the retail sale of distilled spirits. Is it distilled spirits? Is that right?
Mild beverages.
Mild beverages and what? Distilled spirits?
No, it's for the, it's all in one.
Okay, that's a caveat, okay. All right, so that's a moratorium. And why I'm within the territorial limits of Upson County is that was in Resolution fifteen dot twenty-twenty-five for Kelly Grocery, seven-eighty-six LLC located at twenty-eleven Yacho Highway. Do we have someone presenting on that? Could you come up to where the speaker is?
Okay, so?
Yeah, I've been on the property since twenty-fourteen or fifteen, and it's been like, store has been there for a long time, thirty years, thirty-five years, Kelly's Corner, I think, everybody knows the store. And recently, since January, my tenant moved, and, you know, I did, re-signed the whole store back again, and we leased it out to someone, they applied. They applied the license and everything. They got the provisional license too from the county. But they did not know until that exemption, like the, so like they, they went to get the, apply the license and they said like, right now you cannot apply. So he has a contingency, like, you know, if I can not get the license, I will not own the business, I will go. So it is really a big loss for me as a landlord. And top of that, I also spent a lot of money to just fix the store back again. You know, it was like I used to be, like, if, if anybody see, I think Mr. Doug seen the store from outside also.
From the outside?
Yeah, like, you know, we, we spent a lot of money and fixed the store back again so we can, you know, start doing business. And now, like, tenant says we cannot run, like, we cannot open the business again if we cannot get the license.
We ain't having a load of beer, I guess, all right?
No.
All right, I got some questions, Chair.
Okay.
You haven't applied for a license yet?
All of the license have been done. Lot we.
You haven't asked for the, the beer and wine license?
But they, like, you know, they already start.
All he's wanting to know is if he, if, if we'll give him a license if he applies, but he has not applied, correct?
Correct. He can't apply right now due to the moratorium.
Right.
So what this, what he's requesting now is to, for an exemption from the moratorium so that he can apply for the beer and wine license. So right now, if you approve the exemption, that just gives him the opportunity to come and apply, not.
Doesn't mean he gets a license.
Doesn't mean he gets a license. You'll still have to go through the process, the application process to get the license.
How far away are we? How far away are we from the language?
Oh, well, that's going to depend on y'all. I mean, we've got a couple of proposals, so.
We got a work session in a week, right?
It may be, I think, was it already on there for the work session?
We had talked about it.
Yeah, we, we had already talked about it.
Yeah. I'm going, I'm going to make a motion. The still spirits, will you define that? Oh, well.
It's not, it's not for a license for the still spirits. That's just the title of the moratorium. It has nothing to do with what the actual license would be.
The store hasn't, the store been selling alcohol before a long time.
Right.
And.
Well, I'm going to make a motion, unless somebody else wants to make one, that because we're under a moratorium and you hasn't, haven't applied for a license before the moratorium, that we deny it for the time being until we have our alcohol license straight out.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Jones to deny the request for exemption.
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Yeah, you're welcome to come back whenever we get all this straightened out.
And I don't want to, at least.
Well, hopefully, we're going to talk about it next week.
Because like, he gave me the ultimatum of 30 days and then it's like, you know, I'm not going to wait for it. So I was just wondering.
Yeah, he, he, you know, he wants to make some money the way.
He won't be with me 30 days.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of flossed. Right? So we've had a lot of discussion and consideration of flosses. I think we started back in February talking about this floss. We are down to the wire. We have to have a intergovernmental agreement with the city of Thomaston and have ballot language to the ballot builder by the 4th of September in order to have flossed on the ballot for voters to decide on 4 November. So, um, we've had at least three negotiations with the city. We have given the city three options. They've had those since probably March. There is only one option that is fair to the taxpayers of Upton County. And that is the 26%, 74% split. In that case, the city would get 26%. The county would get 74%. And it's not those entities, it's the taxpayers of those entities would get those funds off of the property tax. And in that case, it would allow property owners to have equity across the county. If you had a $100,000 property in the city, you'd pay basically the same tax as someone who has a $100,000 property in the county, 200,000, 200,000. It's, it's within dollars, not hundreds of dollars, dollars of each other under that scenario. That scenario also wipes out the city property tax. So, um, what I have here is a draft of a intergovernmental agreement. What this, what this does, it lays out what we would like the allocation to be. That is 74% to the county and 26% to the city of Thomaston. It provides for a calculation. Provides for a calculation dealing with the net digest of both entities. You combine the net digest and then you take each entity and divide it by that combined net digest and that gives you a percentage. The way this is written, it would happen every year. So starting in 2026, we would use what that percentage is for this year when we did the net digest. That comes out basically 2674. And then next year, while 26 is being collected, we'll figure out what the percentage is for 27. Doing it with that methodology, it gives the opportunity for that percentage to change every year. If there's more properties, if there's more homes built in the city, if the city annexes property that they've spoken about, it would change their percentage. So that could go up. But there is a, there is a, a way for the percentage to be higher for the city in this language. It gives them a pathway to a higher percentage, but it would still be the same formula. So the equity would still be there. The funds would be distributed each year between the two parties. The county maintains the funds, receives the funds from the Department of Revenue and distributes those funds to the, to the city. The language for the ballot, which is what's important, is shall a one, a special 1% sales and use tax be imposed for five years within the special taxing district of Upton County with the proceeds exclusively used for, to reduce property taxes imposed by Upton County and the city of Thomaston? And the voters would get to vote yes or no on the 4th of November. And this agreement would give us a 7426 split. That's our draft agreement. And I just wanted everybody to know where we stand. I think most people know where we stand. So we need to get an agreement with the city of Thomaston within a week.
Mr. Chairman, I have to look at this. I mean, I, I'd like to make a motion if I could. I mean, just can we not adopt this and deny it and authorize it to be sent over to?
I think so. We've done all the legwork. We've done all the research. We, we've done all the proposals. We've, we've done the legal paperwork. So Commissioner Ellington has a motion to approve or adopt the intergovernmental agreement in the draft form that we have right now.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Too late to ask a question. But that's okay. I'm good.
Chairman, are you instructing Mr. Salter to present to the city?
I am. The intergovernmental agreement is signed by the city. It needs one signature from Mayor J.D. Stallings and we can go to the polls.
At least it got to be in before?
Before September.
But they end September, fourth?
Fourth of September.
Fourth of September?
Next. All right. Uh, next on the agenda is comments. County manager.
No, sir, I don't have any, thank you.
Okay. Attorney?
Nothing other than executive session.
Okay. Mr. Biggs? Mr. Ellington?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to commend both you and tax Mr. Chastain for the presentation last night. Hey, I sit up here and I see all these things coming, but y'all broke it down to a point that made me wake up and go, wait a minute. This, this is, this is the real deal here. So I, I want to thank both of y'all for providing that information to the people. It made it simple. If you didn't see it or if you hadn't heard about it, ask somebody about it.
Go watch it.
It, it's on YouTube. Go, go watch it. I mean, look, if I can get it, you can get it. It's a straight to the point, honest, non-biased. And I personally need it to happen for me, just like every other taxpayer. So thank y'all for that. Other than that, I don't have any further comments. Appreciate it.
Mr. Jones?
I want to, I ain't going to throw a hole out on Jay Dulcet here. It shouldn't have took this long. I don't like to go to the wire on anything county government. I came from the business world. The business world moves fast. You make a decision, you do it. County and the city and all the federal government, everything else, they got to talk about it 50 times before anything ought to be done. It's just the way it is, the way it's legal and everything else. But this one got pushed right to the limit and we got to make the first step. And we did. And I'm proud of y'all for taking up the fight and showing the real truth about the flossed. And I'm ready to move forward and give this to all the citizens, not just the county park, not just the city park, but every single person in this county. Just vote yes if it comes up.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah, just one thing, just want to mention again so we don't lose sight of it. I don't know if it's on the work session or not, but ultimately I want to, you know, talk to our county engineer and have them put together some type of master plan for the ball fields. So I think my suggestion is to have them provide pricing on, you know, what it's going to take to put that design together. And then we can, you know, go from there once we see what he has to say.
My only comments are we have to get flossed done for the taxpayers. We have presented a proposal. We had the proposal available since March, I think, is when we gave it to the city for the first time. It is a fair proposal for the taxpayer, right? It's not about the city, it's not about the county, it's about the taxpayer. And we need to get this done and get it on the ballot and give the taxpayer the opportunity to decide if that's how they want to address property taxes with the 1 cent sales tax. That would essentially take 60% of the M and O burden from the, from the city taxpayer and 40% of the M and O burden from the county taxpayer and put them both on a level playing field with taxes equal for equal property values. And that's all I have. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Salute.
I have a motion from Commissioner Jones to go into executive session. I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.